Good morning. January, July 8th. I'm six months slow. The clock on the wall is 26 minutes slow. It's nine o'clock by my clock right now, so the clock is wrong. We're getting started. Committee of the whole, items one and two on the agenda. There are no additions. There was no business rise of the minutes. So we're going to go straight to presentations. 3.1, presenting on behalf of Cliff Greenfield. I knew having council meetings on a Monday morning was a mistake. Presenting on behalf of Pembina Valley Conservation District, we have Cliff Greenfield. We just asked for presentations that you sit at the desk for audios and purposes, and we recognize Cliff Greenfield.
Yeah, thank you very much. I brought quickly a bit of a crew, so we have sub-district members, Les Tuskowski, Walt Huthbert, and Brian Meidker. And Gary Hebert also represents your municipal in the Conservation District. So I brought about a 10-minute presentation. I wanted to show you some slides, just tell you generally what we do, give you an idea. I know quite a few of you. I know everybody. I met Brandon the other day at the Nature Expo. And he invited me here, and Gary sort of set this up, so thank you very much. And thank you for your support, and the really fantastic board members that you provided us. This is the current map of the Conservation District. And it started back in 1999. Basically, the deals with the Dryads, the municipalities in the area thought that a Conservation District would help them deal with the drought. But of course, a Conservation District has programs for drought in wet times. So during the 90s, it was quite good weather, and that's when a few other organizations joined. It started as four municipalities, a few others joined, and then Yarm Stanley and City of Morton joined in the 2000s. So advancing the slides, I'm going to do that.
Do you want to just keep me?
Okay, just keep me. Okay, perfect. So, you know, why would Morton, you know, some of you who were around back then, I think Hank who was on council, you know, why would you want to join a Conservation District? This slide kind of shows some of the fundamental reasons, is that if you want to work on water management with your neighbors in a watershed, Conservation District is a good way to do that. We focus on water quality and management of the water. And in this case, the City of Morton has a number of environmental issues that we can work on. So the reservoir, the water quality in the reservoir, and the fact that the Arm of Pembina has at least half of the watershed, and the Arm Stanley has the number of city water. So you need to work with your watershed neighbors if you want to improve and safeguard that water supply and recreational source. So, that is the next slide. And of course, you know, the catastrophic flooding that can happen, you know, the Morton Dam in Washtenaw is a high-risk situation that sits above the town. And, you know, one of the things that we've really focused on is flood peak reduction. So we're interested in reducing the threat of this happening to Morton. So we've got a number of structures and headwires, and we continue to look for more that slow down that flood peak. You still get the volume, but you don't, your peak is lessened. You know, water is a great thing, we all want the water, but it all comes at the same time, that's when it can cause a problem. Next slide. This is our new boundary. So in January of 2020, we're going to go over new watershed boundaries. So it doesn't impact the City of Morton that much. We're going to focus on Pembina River and then the watersheds that Morton is involved in, so the Dead Horse, the Plum Buff Flow. And we're giving away sort of our northern boundary. The Arm Thompson will no longer be a partner with Pembina Valley, they'll belong to the Conservation District. I forgot to mention Doug was on our board for quite a while, he's going to be a very good guy.
No.
But yeah, thank you for your work, Doug. And so this, we've got a proposal that outlines how that's going to happen, and this new map, that you should have that, I guess. But if you want more information, we will definitely sit down and talk to you guys about that, if you want more information. In the spring, we visited all our partners, future and existing partners, to talk about this, and this is kind of an opportunity for you guys to ask questions about that sort of slide. Another reason why Morton would be in a Conservation District is that we have a lot of expertise with bank stabilization, and with the Dead Horse Creek running right through the middle of Morton, that's an issue that you guys have had to deal with. Next slide. And then we talked about this, and the, I don't know if you have a point person for the Tetra Tech Study, and the issue of the capacity study on Lake Minnewasta, that's another issue that we would deal with. Next slide. Yeah, Dead Horse Creek. I remember a while ago, I met with the council to talk about future development on the Dead Horse Creek, and we recommended, well, a certain recurring buffer, a certain buffer, because creeks move, you know, you need to make allowances for that. But of course, in the city, you know, that type of land is incredibly valuable, so it's kind of a balance. So, you know, we made a recommendation on width, and, you know, the development has taken place for the most part. And I think there was, you know, there's a story about some errors made on the survey that some of those houses are right on the creek. You know, initially, the town wanted a 25-foot buffer, sort of from the high watermark to where the proper lines would start. But that's not there anymore, either there's bank erosion or, you know, the houses, that survey line was different than what the design was. So we've done a lot of this type of work with the City of Morton, it's been a good partnership. There's more to do, but again, that's a big issue that Morton has to deal with, and we can help you out with that. Next slide, please. Again. One more time. So I talked about this flood peak reduction scheme. So it's based on science, and in the Sub-Tobacco Creek watershed, it's been proven that if you put a number of small structures and hold back the water, you can reduce the flood peak, and that's what we're aiming to do. Next slide, please. And three of the structures we have are in the Yarm Stanley on Ray White's property. So it's a farmer in the headwaters, we've got three water control structures. And this was after a big event in June, where there's five or six inches of rain, you know, in a couple days, and these three structures, you know, were very obvious in that they had some flood peak reduction attributes, so. Slide. Did I scratch my head or something?
Yeah, that works too.
And this is just a part of the construction. And so they're fairly modest structures, you know, this is a typical control pipe, it's about probably a four-foot vertical, that would allow water to come in during high flows, and then a probably two-foot horizontal pipe, and then maybe an 18-inch pipe in the middle. So you're really restricting that flow, and then you allow the water to kind of surcharge behind the dam, and then flow through there. And so you're attenuating that flood peak. Next slide. Again. We're involved with bigger projects as well. This is not in the Dead Horse watershed, this is in the Shannon Creek watershed, and it's a partnership with Ducks Unlimited. So this is a very big wetland restoration project that, you know, has a really big impact on the downstream flow. And in this case, it's very farmer-friendly, it's kind of a project that everybody wins, farmers win, because they don't have the flooding, unless it's controlled flooding for ag production downstream, they win, the landlords win, less flood peak. Plus, that water attenuates, so it goes over a longer period of time, and people that might want to use that water have access to it. So there's a tree nursery downstream that uses the water, you know, into June and July because the flow is attenuating. Next slide. Invasive species. This is a question for you guys, and I'm sure you've talked about it at the table. Are we doing enough to prevent zebra mussels from entering Lake Minnewasta? Is the problem good enough? You know, we've got signs up, the province has some stations, and we tell people to clean their boats. But I think it's a real question. And two things that I learned is that zebra mussels are bad, it's going to degrade the water quality, it'll lose the habitat for the fish, so you have a poorer fishery. They'll eat the good food and leave the bad food, the blue-green algae. And then the other thing is that we can't make a difference. You can prevent zebra mussels from entering Lake Minnewasta. I think a couple years ago, I used to think, well, there's nothing you can do about it, you can't restrain mother nature, it's going to happen. I think you can, with the right kind of plan. So will we talk about that further? This is just kind of bread and butter program, we work with farmers on outside watering systems and recurring enhancement. Grassroots, other slide. Steep slopes is something we've focused on, we've had some money in the past from the federal government to work on steep slopes on the Manitowoc garment, but our valleys slopes are no different. Those are at risk of trees being converted to cultivated land, so we've got a program on that. And, over here at the end, there's source water protection, that's an important aspect to work on, water conservation, water soft path, those types of things. Environmental education is something that we work on, you know, somebody said, you got to regulate the old and educate the young, so we have some education for our generation, but a lot focuses on new people. Agricultural sort of watershed research, there's a new push by the federal government to do some field-scale watershed research, and a couple different watersheds, and we're a part of that. So just north of Morton, that yellow shape is the North Shannon, and then the purple shape on the left is the Storm Lake watershed. So we're going to be involved, probably over the next 20 years, two projects involved in kind of ag research and how to improve the sustainability of agriculture in Manitowoc. Next slide. Urban conservation programming. You know, we do some of these, definitely the slate is open to do a variety of things for urban partners, but again, our bread and butter has been the water control work. Next slide. I guess that's it. Any questions or comments from the panel?
Well, I haven't seen your name. But that's the existing one, not the new one, all right?
You have that?
This one? Is that, this not your new one, is it?
No, I have the new one here. So I just brought one copy of the proposal. This kind of outlines the different partners and the sub-districts and that kind of thing. And then there's a map that shows the, you know, the new sub-districts and the new outline of the new district.
How did you establish that northern border? Like, how did you establish the border for all of those, for your district?
Yeah, so, you know, our old map, the sub-districts were some watersheds, except the external boundary was municipal boundaries. So the Arm of Thompson, it was a square boundary. Now, this new shape, this part on the left here is the Pembina River watershed, so this is the height of land between the Pembina River and the Cypress Creek or the Cypress River, or the Assinibo River watersheds.
Okay.
So we're strictly Red River watersheds, this is the Pembina River, and then this will be the Plum Buff Flow. On the east, there's a cross-hatched area that has Blighland, Droland, Morris, Moncombe, those are non-existing partners, but there's interest there. So at some point, we'll expand right to the Red River.
See, the issue is, the hatch area wants to get rid of water, and the area on the left wants water, right?
Well, the Red River valley, you know, away from the escarpment, is definitely has different needs.
Yep.
You know, they're flat, they're clay, they have different needs, but they're, it's still interested in surface water management, and water quality, drinking water quality, that sort of thing. So there's a lot of common interest, but in some areas, you know, for these retention projects, these guys are helping to pay for them, because they're getting the water eventually.
Yep.
That does cause problems for them, those flood peaks. So there is ways to work together. Principally, they haven't been partnered in Conservation District because, you know, right now, the province is responsible for a lot of their bridges and drains. So if they become a Conservation District, then I guess they're threatened that they would have to take those over. So if you've got to look after bridges and drains, then, you know, that's going to be quite expensive.
Okay, and then you mentioned Thompson's out of it, when you're with your new proposal.
Yeah.
And they're going to, what's the reason for that?
Well, they're in a different watershed, so they'll be in with the Tobacco Creek, the Shannon, Thornhill. So they'll be in a new, not a new Conservation District, that currently is the Los Salvi One Conservation District. So they'll have some new partners. So again, I guess the focus on the watershed, which makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
So I'll give you these maps.
Yeah, we'll give them to Mary Ann, she can distribute it to us.
And we have these all visually, too.
So the Shannon, the Thornhill, Cooley, that's all?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that'll be the general watershed.
But that all feeds from, I guess, well, the Dead Horse?
Yeah, the Dead Horse will be a divide between the Dead Horse and the Thornhill.
Yeah.
And so we're going to focus on the Dead Horse, and they'll focus on the Thornhill-Shannon. So, yeah, it's going to be a bit of an adjustment, but again, it should be, should be better for you.
Because geographically, I mean, they're so close together.
They are.
We farm on the Thornhill-Cooley.
So you'd farm both?
Yeah, so then, okay.
So there, yeah, that's a change, you're going to deal with both Conservation Districts, perhaps.
Oh.
So, but again, we're going to, you know, we're going to focus, and we'll hopefully give you better representation that way, because we're focused. That's the idea, that's the theory, so.
Zebra mussels in Lake Minnewasta, is that an issue that we bring to the province, or is that our issue, or that we?
Yeah, well, I think it's something that you have to talk about, because they have their program, and they're providing advice to you and that sort of thing, but, you know, you could do more, I think, you know, than their basic plan, but that's the option. Because, you know, again, they say that it's a bad thing. I used to think, well, zebra mussels are good, because they'll clean the water, but they eat the green algae, not the blue-green algae, so they take away the food source for the, you know, for your fish stocks. So it might look cleaner, but it's not going to be helpful.
They also, potentially, if they grow enough, could block our water lines, right?
Yep, and I'm sure the water plant guys will get that already, and make allowances, because, yeah, that can be a real problem.
I know the Pembina Valley water co-op with the Red River, because they're in the Red River, they're having issues with them.
Oh, is that right? Okay, yeah. The nice thing with them is they...
With other intake valves.
They won't, they won't swim upstream. So if you've got water flowing, they can't swim upstream.
Okay, they stay.
They're not swimming. They got to be basically brought there, you know, so you take your boat, you're fishing a lot for one day, fishing at Lake Minnewasta the next, zebra mussels.
Transferring.
Yeah. So that's where, you know, you have control of the different access points for some of them. I mean, there's, certainly, they're larval stage of the microscopic, they can get in your life jacket, in your ropes, they're, they are kind of tricky to, to deal with, but, you know, there are methods to do that. So, yeah, I think, Gord, you would work that part and thought about that, too?
Yeah, well, for sure. But we hear about it on the news, too, about Lake Minnewasta and all these different places with zebra mussels. Talking to some of the guys, too, and they say there's some provincial wash stations that are not Manningwood all the time.
Okay, yeah.
The guys are coming in and out with boats and not getting washed.
Yep. Yeah, it's a big effort, you know, for a guy, you're fishing, to, you know, take you to one of these government stations, it might take you a day to get that properly cleaned. And it's a bit of a process to do it yourself, it's not really just go to the car wash, you know, you have to, you have to take some special precautions, some right temperature and pressure. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying you should do something different, but, you know, you should at least be aware of what the risks are, and what the damages would be if there is that, if that does take place.
Just one, I just have a comment, I think Consor Hillbrand and Consor Frostray know this, but you spoke briefly about Dead Horse Creek stabilization, and that Pembina Valley Conservation District works on annual basis, probably with Shaun, right?
Yeah.
Where you establish, or where you sort of target certain areas of the creek, and then on a shared funding basis, on annual basis, I guess, there's some of that restoration down.
Yeah, we typically spend $10,000 a year, just on average, off with the City of Morton on bank stabilization, and there's more to be done. I've asked our guys for a number, that what's the, you know, what's the end game? What year can we stabilize the entire Dead Horse? And then, in your city, you've got to realize, there's areas that are privately owned, and there's areas that are city-owned. And that was another one of our recommendations, is that, you know, this type of thing, this Dead Horse Creek, probably should have a public right-of-way, or, you know, public access, so the public is responsible for that, rather than an individual landlord, right? Because I think, Hank, you have property?
Well, I spent that $10,000 just on my property.
Yeah, so that's, you know, that's a tough thing, you know, unless you've got really deep pockets to put that on an individual landlord. So it seemed like the new planning was geared to, okay, public access, and I think it's ideal if you had a public facility between the, sort of, the land, the homes, and this, you know, kind of crazy resource that can flood, or give you wildlife problems, that sort of thing. So like a trail, or a road, or some kind of delineation. I think in Morton, they've got a kind of a tree rule, sort of, okay, this is public and this is private, because we don't want the private guys sort of clearing all the trees and everything, and creating basically a risk for more erosion. So if you remove all that natural protection, that natural vegetation, because we want to see the creek, it's natural, but it takes away some of that protection, and then you're forced to do the rock river rock.
Years, oh, sorry. I'm just going to say, years ago, you did some work on Lake Minnewasta, some stabilization, from the weight and boats, did that work?
Ah, in some areas it did, and in some areas it didn't. You know, so Lake Minnewasta is not a natural lake, it was, you know, created by the dam, so, you know, 50 years of water, where it wasn't used to, there's some natural erosion taking place, and that natural erosion creates kind of a beach, and that, that's still happening in a few places. Like, there's that, on the park, the North Point lookout, there's kind of a hill there, and we tried stabilizing that, and it, that's not working, it's still kind of an active erosion area. Some areas it's worked, and some areas it doesn't. It's a fairly cheap way to do stabilization, but I think in some areas, the rock river rock would be the appropriate approach. And not for the whole, like, just for certain areas that are, you know, it's very active erosion, and you've kind of, you know, you've had enough, had enough of that, or you, you know, you don't want, you know, all that sediment in the water, it's more expensive to treat if you're treating dirty water.
So with the, with the Dead Horse Creek, how did some of it become privately owned versus city-owned?
Well, just as the City of Morton, or the town of Morton developed, you know, the thinking, you know, 50 years ago, was that, well, this is private property, and, you know, they want a piece of the creek, and that sort of thing. And then, you know, just within the last, you know, 15, 20 years, the thinking is, well, it should really be a public thing to protect, you know, that residential development from the hazards of the creek. You know, having property on the creek is not for the, I don't know what the word is, I mean, it's tricky, right? It's a delicate situation. Talked to one guy, they were kind of scared of wildlife, they were scared of fire, we pulled by a house by the creek, you know? It's a risky situation to be in, at least if you have the town has a property, you know, they can do the bank stabilization, they can address any wildlife concerns. One of the problems is that if we only have a 25-foot right-of-way, in the future, if we have to go in there and do some bank stabilization, the town has some access points, but at some point, we might have to go in, remove the trees, do the bank stabilization, and then replant, because there's not a lot of space in there, you know, for that. So, you know, you've got a beautiful resource, the Dead Horse Creek, but it becomes a box, where you have to, you have to deal with it. And where does it help you?
So I think anything north of Park Hill is part, it has at least 25 feet is the goal, and that is valid.
Didn't we say 50 feet?
Well, some areas, it's more, some is losing some.
Yeah.
Some people did develop that, or not develop it, but mowed it and was using it, and so we've lost some there. But I think anything basically north of Park Hill.
Right.
And we do still own a lot of property there as an access point, there's a lot there that we own.
So Claire's got some good maps showing the area that is public and private, and...
Like, our property, we're at the north end of 15th. We've got that 25-foot buffer, but like Max Friesen, he owns to the other side of the creek.
Right.
So his property, just the way it was so developed.
The old development.
Yeah.
So, yeah, how much of the buffer is appropriate, that's a tough call, you know? But the City of Winnipeg has the same issues, all, you know, cities have those problems if you have a creek running through them. So, but it's, yeah, it's a beautiful resource, it makes Morton kind of what it is.
Thank you kindly. All right, agenda item number 3.2, Community Futures Heartland, Mr. Ken Reimer. And I want to apologize for the fiasco that happened last council, committee meeting.
Always a good trip to come to Morton.
He came to Morton, but was not thrown the agenda. And we thought he was just here to, to, yeah. 3.2, we recognize Ken Reimer for 10 minutes.
All right, thank you very much for giving me another opportunity to come, come to the beautiful City of Morton. We're just panning out the presentation that I'm going to briefly go over, as well as one of our volunteers. So Community Futures Heartland, we'd like to get up to see all of our council members every couple of years, just to show our faces again, just to make sure that everyone on council, after the election, knows what we do and how we can serve our residents and our community. So we're, all Community Futures offices, there's 269 of them across Canada, we're the largest federal presence in rural Canada outside of the post offices. There are 16 Community Futures offices in Manitowoc, and we service all of, all of rural Manitowoc, just so we don't offer services to urban centers. So the City of Winnipeg is only a place in Manitowoc that Community Futures office doesn't service. We're all governed by our local volunteer board of directors, and currently, a council of that appointed to our board. We had Consor Hillbrand previously, he was our chair as well, and so we just thank you for appointing those councillors to our board of directors. So our mandate is to help rural businesses start to expand, and we also do community development work. So one of the first pillars of what we do is the community develop, or business development services. So we do consulting, referrals, business and cash flow planning. Banks don't spend time with clients when they come in to create business plans or cash flows and things necessary in order to get a loan, and so what happens is they'll refer them to us, and we'll help the client go through the business planning process, make the cash flows, so that they can then go to a traditional financer and get their loan from them, or they can use our own loan program. So a lot of the times, we just have new entrepreneurs come in through the door and say, you know, how do I register a business name, get a GST number, you know, how do my financials look? What should I, if I own a restaurant, how much should I be spending on food? And so we have all that kind of information with our business analysts that can help clients when they come in. So anything from just a basic idea, I think I want to do this, and we'll help them see if it's a good idea or not, and then all the way to expansion and succession, and hopefully a successful sale at the end. With that, we have a flexible financing program, so we can loan up to $150,000 currently to a smaller, medium-sized enterprise. The government is looking to expand that above the $150,000 mark, just because when the program was introduced in, well, the entire program in the mid-'80s, $150,000 got to somewhere, $150,000 just basically gets you in trouble these days, it doesn't even fill inventory on the store. We have convertible interest rates, so when a client comes to us, they have to at least try traditional financing prior to us lending the money. The government is not into the business to compete against banks or credit unions, so as long as someone is traditionally sort of unbankable, we can then produce a loan for them. With that, we don't turn away good clients, we need some of those to replenish our loan accounts as well. A lot of our clients come back to us time after time, we've one client, I think is on loan number 11 with us right now, and so they just like the way we do business with them, and, you know, we're the friendly lender up there. We also have a loan account for entrepreneurs that have disability or a health condition. The government just wants to make sure that all aspects of the population have access to funding capital as well. The only clients we are not allowed to lend to is primary agriculture, and so FCC takes care of that, or the federal government as well. We do community development work, so we have one staff person that is, that is on staff that does strategic plans, training seminars, we have the youth small business camps, we do student curriculum, we're in the high schools a lot as well, so we help do strategic plans for nonprofits, daycares, RMs, and people like that, as well as, we do have a certain number of clients that we need to train, so we do the training seminars for entrepreneurs all the time as well. So on the bottom left-hand side, you can see the Community Futures Heartland region, those are the RM cities and towns that we represent. On the right-hand side is the White Horse Plains region, we were lucky enough to have a council... We were lucky enough to have Councilor Hildebrandt on our board at the time when we were negotiating with the Community Futures White Horse Plains office to provide staffing for them. So he was instrumental in making sure that that contract went through. And so we're, we now have five full-time staff and provide services to a, a large region. And there's a picture of us as well. So on the backside of that paper, you can see, um, every year we need to provide the business numbers of the clients we serve to the federal government and they do the analysis of the program. So the top line, bar graph is, um, the annual employment growth in Western Canada firms of less than 100 people, 100 employees. The blue bars are the percentages of employment growth for companies that have come to a Community Futures office for help. And the red graphs are comparable ones that have not come to us for help. So it's good to see that the blue bar is much higher. And so that just says that the employment growth is a lot higher in those companies. And the, the two bars on the right-hand side are primary agriculture. So that's why those bars are inverted. Uh, the bottom graph is the survival rate of companies from startup in year one through year nine. And, um, this percentage of businesses that are still in operation year over year. So the blue line is higher and which shows that, um, the companies that come to us for help are in business longer than the ones that do not come to us for help. So it just goes to show that our program is useful and it's had no cost to, to our municipalities and no cost to our clients other than paying back their loan that they have. So we currently have 33 loans up right now at a value that, I think, just over $2 million. So we're, we're one of the more activations in, in the province, as you all know, very active region that we have. So it's, uh, good to see that we have a, a large loan portfolio. So those are the services we provide. If you have any questions, um, ask me now or forward them through Councilor Matt. He's a active participant overboard as well.
What's your success, succession rate in loans, like how many loans would you not be able to collect as a sample?
Um, somewhere between 5 and 7%. Quite high compared to traditional financiers and banks are 10 to 1% that are uncollectible.
Do they have to submit security when they apply for loans or...
Yeah, we do require some sort of security. Often we're second, third in line. So usually by the time it comes down to it, everything is gone and cleaned out. We always do take personal security. If we're lucky enough, there's equity in somebody's house that we'll take and usually that's the last thing they want to lose. And so, but often, often there's nothing left.
What is your capacity for the, for business analysis? Um, the reason I ask is attending your AGM, which by the way was, was amazing.
Good, thank you for attending.
But I had a conversation, and I'd be able to point it out on the picture, but I don't know her name.
Alana.
Was it? Uh, second from the left.
Yeah.
Okay, Alana.
Yes.
I had a conversation with her about, uh, what you can do in terms of assisting startups in Morden, uh, in particular as a part of a process before we give them space in an incubator location. Um, I know there are other communities that do that.
Okay.
And use, use Community Futures kind of as a, kind of a, you know, a, a means of vetting business ideas before giving them.
Okay.
Access to, you know, incubator malls or incubator locations. Um, is, is that a program or a thing you have made a habit of doing or is that news to you in terms of maybe your programs getting abused?
No, there's no abuse of the program, that's for sure. Uh, we have never, I mean, certainly we have the capacity to, to vet people or provide analysis to the city on the viability of a business.
Okay.
If they want to apply for the incubator mall space, absolutely, that's a service we could provide.
Okay.
And we would, you know, provide whatever necessary information you were looking for.
Okay.
Yeah, on that business. So, um, yeah, that's certainly something we, we could do and we would certainly be willing to do.
Okay.
Do you think in a requirement of every business that wants to go in there would first go to Community Futures to get a, your business plan review?
Or to establish a business.
Or establish.
Yeah. Because I know not every, I mean, not every business is equally viable, right? It gives us some assurance.
Well, that also gives them an opportunity to lend to those people so younger people can do it.
Yeah, yeah. Our, you know, our paychecks aren't dependent on loans or anything like that. We just, as long as we have successful businesses in the region, we do what we need to do. We have assisted businesses in your incubator mall in the past.
Right, yeah.
It's worked out well.
And now, remember...
Yeah.
Isn't that something the city of Winkler does is they cut it through you first before the amendment to the incubator?
No, we clearly, uh, never...
Well, I thought I saw...
...an analysis on about Henry said something.
That's what Henry said at the AGM, that's the community I'm referring to. Um, he, he claimed that they all went to Community Futures before getting...
Oh.
...incubator location.
Not that I...
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe it's just a good idea.
It's a, it's a good idea.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Reimer? Good? Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right.
Second chance.
Yeah.
All right, 3.3 parking on Connor Hill Drive. Is somebody making a presentation on that or...
Yeah, like the door trucks, the letter and...
What's your thoughts on that, Brad? Well, he's requesting on Connor Hill parking on both sides.
I don't have any objections to it. It's, uh, not only is it a narrow street, it's, it occurs and so forth. It probably will occur, I'm sure. I don't know what the residents would think, but for safety purposes, it's probably the smart idea.
Yeah, it's interesting, that curve, especially at Connor and two over there. But then everybody, I mean, how many times have they painted that line there? People, people still cut that off, right?
Yeah, and, and, you know, sometimes, sometimes vehicles park actually slow down traffic, but sometimes they don't, you know? Uh, you know, on other streets where, where you're going, parking on both sides, people generally have to slow down because of that. So that actually, in a way, kind of acts as a, as a speed restriction, but, uh, but at other times it's, it's unsafe. So I don't have any objections to it. It's just the enforcement, you know, that, um, consistent enforcement, and that's the issue we have with bylaws, is being able to consistently enforce them. And that's where people get upset, where, you know, somebody may get a warning or a bylaw ticket one day and they don't get to enforce this consistently and there's other vehicles parked there and then they'll complain, well, I gotta take it, why isn't this... It's like that with a lot of things, but that's just something we have to continue to work on. Perhaps our bylaws should accomplish that and keep the value of those sort of things. From a safety perspective, it, it makes sense, for sure.
I think what we should do is defer that, uh, letter to our management team, let them come back with a recommendation, so. I think, have you not in the past looked at it with you and Andy? It seems to me like in the last...
We considered that and other streets for, for, for one side parking.
I think we'll defer it. I would recommend we defer it to Basil and he can talk to his staff about it and come back with, uh, suggestions.
So does that mean that in the past then nothing was done? Is that right?
Right. Right. It's probably a reason and I, you know what, I, I don't know what it is right now. And, uh, you know, like I, I know you have a letter assigned by three people, but there's a lot more than three people living on that street, so.
The gentleman that brought this up, he's not here today. That could be partially my fault, but there, the ones, points that he mentioned as well is, especially in winter, he also lives on Connor Hill. So if there's parking on both sides and in sections, if I'm right, or the whole, the whole way, there's no sidewalks either. So when they're walking somewhere, they're walking on the street. And when a car is coming down there at whatever, they have, they have nowhere to go if, like, they're stuck between banks of snow because that's where they...
Yeah, no, that's fair. And I think, uh, we have looked at, um, the sidewalks along Connor Hill too and, and that can, again, that's addressed in the letter, so I think we should defer it to management and then come back at some point in the future, come back with a recommendation.
All right, 4.0 corporate.
I know this person not looking at, he doesn't want any sidewalks. Well, if you don't want sidewalks, you don't want people on the street, then I'm not sure how you deal with it, so. That's why it has to go to management and come back with a recommendation.
Okay. Uh, 4.0 corporate, we hand it over to Councilor Hildebrandt.
Okay. You've all had a chance to look at your, at the financial report that was sent out and does anybody have any questions? Patrick? I've got a feel and I will wait for you folks. Yeah, Gary?
I just, I just wonder if we could make that priority, get to budget numbers in there. It's very hard to assess exactly where you're at if budget numbers aren't in there.
Yep, I agree. It was one of my last orders since last time. It's just, things got shifted around for other projects. Okay, but...
There's a few budget items, yeah, there, I agree, but, you know, again, he's being confronted with all kinds of crisis situations, so, um, I think we need to look at some of our expenses and we need to adjust the, the budget or some of our behaviors. I don't know, uh, I mean, just going from the top down, we look at our own governance model, I mean, maybe we didn't budget enough for our mayor, uh, but he's over budget. Uh, there's, uh, snow clearing, $33,000, I think it is, the number that we're, and how we're going to deal with that in fall, I mean, we're over budget.
There's also workshop and yard operations too, I know it's 102%.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what that is, but I, I know what it is, but I'm not sure what, why the discrepancy is. Workshop.
I just assume that the one that says, uh, under, on page 7 of 84, Patrick, under general operating fund, damage claims and liability insurance, we're, we're budget 190 and we're at now 196. And I noticed the other day, they're signing a lot of checks that had, got paid to a body shop for, for our deductible for hail damage, I guess, from a year ago. We have a lot of vehicles repaired and so on. That'll, I'm not, I don't think that's in these numbers.
I don't think it will go into that line item.
No.
That one that we're looking is basically the general insurance.
That's okay.
So that is for the year, basically.
Okay, the others are going, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had an increase to this year, right?
Yeah, it was. So now that number might look a little different than the previous report because they, now they have been distributed, the costs have been distributed to the other departments as well through general.
Then there's, uh, snow and ice removed, just for, I, I think we talked about it last month and I just, again, we budgeted 272, we spent 3 of 7, so we're $35,000 over budget and, of course, we have, uh, November, December of this year to go yet, so. And then we got environmental health and garbage collection, we budgeted 117, we're now at 71, so, and so we're at 61% spent and we're 50% of the year done, so. And then composting, I think it's in line, um, 53% spent, so that part is good, so. Anyway, those are just some of the items.
Fairly close to the 50%, but there's one item that I don't know that we've discussed before. If you go to the utility operating fund, income statements, on the last page it will be, and it's sewer collection system costs.
Yeah.
Other expense.
Yeah.
There's no budget number in there, but the actual budget number is around 25,000 and we have, our actual is 68,000, almost 67,000. So I just wanted to address that and say that's from the multiple water line breaks that we have to deal with this spring.
Okay.
So there was, there was many, many, many of them, more than a normal year, so we're, we're, we're on that one.
Yeah, and it would be nice if there was a variance report so that if we're, we're up or down from where it should be, that we get a report and indicator of what the rationale is behind some of those expenses or revenues.
That's the intention. I need to, it was...
Get Serena to do it.
With myself and my finance officer, we're supposed to set something up. We'll just have them come in.
I hear you. I hear you. The thing is, for us, you know, city, we get to look at these numbers once a month and we don't, uh, we, would be nice for us just maybe, even if you did a verbal, if you went through there and, you know, just gave us, you know, sort of an update. I mean, talking about protective service detention, you know, automobile expenses were 63%, you know, a budget. I mean, I'm sure there's some reason for it, license probably are part of it and...
That'll be part of it and then just regular repairs.
Okay.
As soon as the, the summer months hit, usually like there's a lot more repairs and maintenance that comes up, they're finally catching up on some of those things.
And like Gary, like this workshop and, and yard operation, like that's at 102%. Gary mentioned that one.
Yeah, that I'll have to look at.
Do you want to have a look at that? Maybe you can shoot us an email. Well, just maybe it's a classification thing, I don't know. Anyway, those are the ones that I noted.
The only other question I sort of had was on, on the handy van. I think I made, I think I submitted that question through email as well. I'm just not quite sure, because we paid them $10,000. And I just wasn't, I, I know normally, I know what the agreement is, but normally we see the audit statements before we pay anything out to them. And I don't think, well, I guess I haven't seen anything, so.
You know, Gary, when they came and did a presentation and I think that I said in my email to you, they included, and I'm sorry, we don't have numbers here to look at, but I believe that they are applying money towards capital for replacement of their handivans. Now, have they removed that out of their operating and applied it to the capital, making a shortfall in their operating? We don't know that.
But still, yeah, and I, I, I do remember something about as well, with the replacement reserve. Uh, the only question I have is, like, I don't think we should just automatically be giving them money unless we see some numbers. Do you know what I mean?
Okay, so we have given them the 10 that we committed to this year.
Well, that, that, it's up to 10.
But it's more, it's more if they wanted to...
Boy, yeah, well, I guess we have.
If they have to present their audited statement, we do.
Right, yeah.
I guess that's my point.
Which only happens like after year end. So the, the audit statements, they have presented, they had a shortfall of about 23, 25,000, which we paid out, right?
And you paid $10,000 off.
Yeah, so now, had, had we not paid the 10, they would not be able to operate.
Unless they apply money towards their capital out of their operating, we don't know.
That I wouldn't be able to guarantee, but...
So maybe we can ask for a copy of their statement?
We get one every month, so we should, we should have some numbers. And as far as my understanding goes, I think the intent was to set up like a replacement reserve, but, um, I think they've been using it to, to stay afloat.
Wow. Because they've been...
Yeah, I guess the only question would be, uh, they should be...
Well, we're covering.
Like coming for approval then before we just give it to them? That's what I'm saying. And I, I'm not giving them at all because I know Roy does a fantastic job there.
Yeah, sure.
I'm not giving them. I'm just saying, normally we would approve that before we, before we gave it to them.
That, that we could have done, we could have brought it to Council.
Okay.
Then I think you need to address that because I think it's in the budget to pay them, so, yeah, it would have been somewhere, we need to specify that it needs full council approval to spend that, like, the budget approved, subject to council approving it. We already approved the budget. So you need to, we need to put something in a procedural manual, right?
Well, I, I guess this seems to be a bit of an anomaly in a way, right? Because you said last year's deficit, we already paid them 25,000, which, which is the agreement, right?
Yeah.
The agreement is you provide the audit statements and if you have a deficit, city of Morden covers it. But this is a bit of an anomaly, anomaly, because we're paying them $10,000 because they were short.
We did this in prior year as well.
We did. I sort of remember, like, not in my time, we didn't, but I'm...
No, and they're, they're, they've gone and made presentations, like their, their ridership hasn't increased substantially, so.
To their expenses for home...
I, we, well, then we have to, council has to consider what they want to do, whether they want to continue supporting them, or do you tell them, do you want to cut your ridership to save costs or... They're, they're, I mean, they've made a, they made a presentation that one, I could Or, they're, they're, I mean, they've made a, they made a presentation that one, I could probably share to you. I think it's electronic, or maybe you did.
Yeah, we were there.
And I think they project, their projection for losses was actually 20,000 this year. So this would be about half, if that's the case. They're hoping that the increased ridership will offset, like the revenues will offset any other further deficit by the end of it.
But at the end of the year, we might have to give.
We may have to pay again, yeah, if it's in excess of what we already have, yeah.
Unless the agreement, the agreement is there, so.
Yeah, that's, in order to get that 30,000 funding from the federal government, it's an application we send, and we put our Eames on it, basically, we're on the hook for any insurance calls.
So we.
In order to get that funding.
Prepared to accept financial statement as presented to the end of July line.
Can I just say one thing here?
Yeah.
Before? You know, when you mentioned about the government, the governance and stuff with, and the mayor and whatnot, I, I just have to say that he's, he's been doing a fantastic job with, with what's, we're dealing with, and, and so I just wanted to mention that with, when you alluded to the governance part of it with, with his spending. So, anyway, that, I just wanted to say that.
What I don't know is, what is, you know, again, we're talking about practice and, and a lot. We've got a budget for a certain amount of money, and you get to spend within that budget. So that's all I'm basing on it. And in practice, just like the handy van, the budget is approved, but we want to approve, make, we want to approve the expense before we send it out. Well, the same thing that we normally have done in the previous council was that if there was a meeting that you had to go to that you're going to charge an indemnity for, we would bring that to council, council approves it, and then it's spent. So we need to address how, the practice of how we're going to handle these.
Yeah.
You know, so it should be in a policy, or should be in a, in a, for, for us to get the authorization to, to spend that money, or to sign the checks, if you will. So, I mean, I just need to know, we need direction, we need direction on the handy van. If that, you're singling that one out, then there's a lot of others that we have to deal with.
Right, and the latter one is, is an in-camera item.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, but it's, the public one is a financial statement.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I just think too, though, I think one of the reasons why that is, as fast as it is, and then Patrick and I discussed that as well, that we have approved that $20,000 discretionary amount, and that never got to the budget. We approved that prior to the budget, $20 discretionary council amount for, as it sounds, for the mayor to go, to attend various things. And that, that amount never got to the budget.
That would be part of it as well, man.
So then, to get around that, you may actually have to prove it at this council? Or you, well, you have to approve that budget, or decline further expense, that's what you got to do. What do you want to do? But right now, I want to approve the financial statement as presented. So are you prepared to move that? The council may have to stop writing checks.
I'll move.
Doug moves.
I'll second that.
Nancy seconds. All right, any further comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, you can indicate, both of any, it's Gary, thank you. Okay, then we have, got my most to work here. The report from community services. First of all, you've had a chance to look at it, we have, Claire's here, we can ask her, she's the author of this. And you can, we can ask her questions if you so will, or she can give us a closed note while the department speak. Closed note.
Okay, so first thing is the communities and blue tour. We just got the date set for July 29th. So I couldn't, I didn't have time to put that in my report, it was the day that I was writing it, that I found out that they were coming. So we have our draft set out. We're taking the CFDC van, so we're limited on number of seats. So Jim is going to drive for us, and Nancy's coming as a counselor, so we have council represented and staff with Sean and I, and then including a couple of business people and volunteers just to give the communities and blue group a wider perspective instead of just staff.
Well, you did actually get July 29th.
July 29th.
Yeah, it is in there.
Yeah, so I got the date in, but no details.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So, so that's what's going on in the CFDC van. I will send out a request if you, anybody else wants to join us for lunch. We're just going to have lunch at the Access Event Center, so we don't have to take time to order a lunch. It'll be all preset and ready for us, and we can also then add as many people as we want. It's not restricted to, and then there'll be a smaller group going for supper. So I'll share the tour with you, if there's anything else you'd like me to include. We just are restricted, we have to be done by 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So we are including a tour of the agriculture research station this time with Jim Menzies. And Purinada is going to give us a tour in the back as a local business that's environmentally friendly. And I've left a message with Prairie Barnwood, they might give us a tour there as well. Just trying to add things that we haven't included before. So that's the tour. The conference is set for the 6th and 7th, and those registration forms should be out soon, and I'll copy that to you. Anybody that wants to participate is invited. That's September.
6th and 7th.
6th and 7th, Friday and Saturday. So U18s, just so you know, our marketing is going to start at the Harvest Festival. We have some posters and have table talkers that are going out this week, like just with the logo and the schedule, and we're going to put those in, well, whoever will type them for us. And then we're handing out pocket schedules that talk about when the tickets are going on sale and has a schedule as a handout at the parades, at the Harvest Festival in Corn and Apple. And there will be, we have a booth set up at Corn and Apple as well. And our sponsorship is, is done, we kept our sponsorship. So between sponsorship and our grants and two gift and kinds, right now we are at 91,800. And, you know, our total budget is 220, 220, so we feel very good about where that's at. That, we have also got a $50,000 grant from Hockey Canada. So there are a few opportunities for businesses still if they want to be involved, and we're doing that news release by the beginning of August, announcing who our current sponsors are, and if you still want to get involved, what your opportunities are. So I don't know, I could talk about that event for an hour, so if you have questions, I'll just take those.
Just one on the Hockey Canada event, are you putting up banners in, on the street?
Yes, we are.
And how many, and are you just looking at Steve, or Thornhill? Are you, it just, we're, we could run into conflict with the, with the region, and have you?
Yeah.
Have you guys together to figure that one out?
Well, I've talked, I, he came and asked, so Ken asked me about that, and I'm the one that was like, whoa, banners?
Yeah.
Those are sitting here. So right now, ours will be on Thornhill and in the parking lot at the Access Event Center. Last time we put some in front of the Civic Center, and, you know, but, you know, we don't have to if that's, if they're being used. We'll find other sponsors.
Trying to accommodate both interest groups and just, if you guys are working on it, then.
Yeah, we're working on it, and we have an obligation to our sponsors, because each platinum sponsor gets three banners in each community, and then along with that, we put a Morden banner, and a Winkler banner, and Hockey Canada banner, and then like the U18 logo banner, so that people know what, what it is, but. So, yeah, I'm aware of what he's doing, so it's good, so.
Okay.
I'll sort that out.
Good.
And then just, we are having a meeting about campground. If there's any questions or things that you think we need to discuss, you can let me know. This is sort of our last opportunity to have a meeting with Lisa's input, so we're doing that on Wednesday before she retires.
The only, at some point in the future, there's need to talk about our water safety instructors at the place for.
We did have a water safety day on Saturday, and we have a life jacket lending program.
And I've talked about the daycare concerns, so.
We don't meet their requirement, I.
Ever, ever, or just now?
So they bring about 15 kids to swimming lessons, and, you know, one of our challenges in having lifeguard staff or beach safety officer staff, they get called different things at a beach, although their, their training is the exact same. Their obligation at a beach is different than their obligation at a pool, and, but they're, they're trained the same. But we have struggled as long, for 10 years to get enough staff, because they can go to the pool in Winkler and Matt to help out on Carmen, and get a lot more hours and a lot more money than they can from us. And so when we went with the life jacket, the life jacket lending, you know, and just the whole idea, you know, if your kids can't swim, you should have them in our beach. But, and when the kids are there with lessons, they, we do meet during the lesson. If they stay after the lesson, we don't meet the requirement, but have to stay after the lesson.
So they can still, we can accommodate their needs for the lessons.
For the lesson.
But not after.
And then, but if they stay while the other kids are doing a lesson, then we wouldn't. But if you came, dropped your kids off, they went to the lessons, and you left.
Okay.
Does that fall under our responsibility, or is that daycare's responsibility?
Well, I would say, like, we, I would say it's daycare's responsibility, and if we don't meet their requirements, then unfortunately, like, we love having them, but, you know, if we don't have enough staff, then, you know, if it, I don't know what we can do about that. And we don't just, like, the students, like, they're all university students, and they need to make money. They're, they're not interested in ours that doesn't start until July, and even then, it's not consistent. If it's a cooler day, but at a pool, it is. And then just, Lisa's retirement is Friday, so if you're available on Friday afternoon, you could meet Michelle, who is Lisa's replacement, and say thank you to Lisa for her 10 years of service.
Who is Michelle?
Michelle Stevens is her name, she started this morning.
What's her background, either, she's been working in the field or?
Yeah, yeah, event, wedding, catering, yeah.
What time off are you taking?
Uh, you know, I'm not, we're not doing a set, we're, I'm not doing a set presentation or anything, so it's just sort of drawn in, if it suits you, anytime after one or two weeks.
Some catches moving, well, some good crowds?
Yeah, great crowds.
Good.
Last weekend was great, multicultural day, there's a big crowd there, lots of them new people that maybe wouldn't, won't go any other time, but the performers, like, were really excited about being, having a chance, and I think it went great.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any other questions? No? Okay, thank you very much, Claire.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have for information only, and if you have questions regarding, Martin is here, is the rezoning of 212 Sixth Street, which will come forward at the council meeting of the month. So if you have any questions ahead of time, Martin is here to ask. Then the next, that's.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure, you can.
It's still in here is RMM?
Yeah, that's what it's supposed to be.
Okay, but, but was the recommendation of RMS?
Yeah, but the way it meets the work is if the applicant comes in and just, you know, regardless of conversations between staff and applicant, the decision of the applicant is to go in a higher work zoning district. We have no ability under the legislation to change her, his mind. So he's applying for it despite our recommendation for the lower ones. And so you guys will then have the opportunity, because it's, and I have this consultancy working in. You guys have the discretion to approve the RMM, so it won't be found in medium or a lower density multiple found area. What can't do is, is approve a higher level density because of the nature of the analysis that it's on. And the legal opinion I have goes back to city, when in many times, but it's a, a moment in the most recent is the deputy attorney general, so it's pretty solid. Is the applicant aware of the concerns of planning? Yes, he is, in addition to face-to-face meeting, we also exchanged several emails.
Okay. Okay, thank you, and then next item, 4.4, is variance and conditional use delegation by law, 828, or 08-201.
I just have a question, question with that one, I guess that's obviously a new one, right? New one, or from the last?
Yeah.
20. Okay, so the way I read it is, now, now someone comes in for a variation or a conditional use, is it designated officer, which is a director of planning engineering, can decide whether it even goes to hearing? Is that the way it's read?
Yes.
So, so not necessarily every request will come to.
Counselor.
To council, that's right.
So as a, by way of example, Councilor Heer, last week you guys had, or two weeks ago, you guys had in front of you a property or a proposal of 31 Evergreen.
Right.
For that one, because you guys hadn't been exposed to this delegation under this bylaw before, we made the decision administratively to bring that application in here. You saw that there was nobody here in opposition. I didn't hear anything from you guys indicating if you guys had a problem with it one way or another. Those are the types that we would typically run the innovative way, that is, if notices go out, letting people know in that 100-meter clock that the proposal has been approved. There's also the indication on that notice that if they object to it, then that triggers a public hearing before council.
I think it's a good idea, no?
We do too. If you guys recall, Councilor Hill Brand and Council of Frost, we brought up the, it was a deflator. Remember you guys had about five or six in a row, in about two months' span of time? And there's, it's just that corporate how it was written, that particular regulation, and we asked you guys, well, and council as a whole at that time, do you guys really find value in conducting a hearing over something that's fairly trivial, isn't it? If we can figure out a way to, to post decision or advertise decision, and then typically save you guys the trouble and use your time better, would you guys be behind that? And I think the answer was, I guess, yes.
Well, I think legislatively, we can do that. I think it's a good idea, I think.
One of the benefits of having a city planner who's been doing this for 25 years in three separate provinces, et cetera, et cetera, is that, well, we had some flack from municipal relations about doing this, but we also have legal opinion by a firm that does work for the province.
Like, does it exist around?
Well, we could use discretion under the municipal act to trump the procedures outlined in the planning act. Manitoba has a history of what's called superior and inferior legislation, and so things like the Assessment Act, the Municipal Act are considered to be superior, and so if there's a conflict between discretion in one act versus another, it's the superior ones that basically you can use, and in this case, the Municipal Act trumps the planning act.
Okay, so then as far as it's sitting right now, your recommendation, and council received this report as information, no procedural modifications to bylaw 08-201A are recommended, and no further action is necessary. So you just follow the, the bylaws presented. Does anybody have any concerns regarding that? Not that we're reporting, if not, then it's documented for information. Good, thank you. And then we will go to, carry on here. The Deputy City Manager Corporate Report. See, he's here, I'll let him speak to it.
Sure.
Sure, I just put together something very high level of what's been happening lately, I guess. So most important of note, I guess, taxes have gone out and people have started paying already, so that's good news.
Did they go out in the deadline time that we're supposed to be out or not? Is there a requirement for any?
There is a requirement.
No? No, okay, just asking a question.
It's about, very similar to what it's gone out the past couple of years, I think.
Good.
But much more smoothly.
Good.
And then twenty seventeen audit, I had a meeting with Tyler last week, so he's knee-deep in it already. He's kind of cleared his schedule to work just exclusively on this for us.
On this, okay. So this should be coming back to us probably by, we don't know.
We haven't discussed timelines yet, so because we're talking about two thousand seventeen, so there was a lot of transitions, whether it be staff and because of the new computer system and all the switchovers, there's more documentation required in an audit from their perspective. So we're still a little bit unsure how long that's going to take, but.
How did you make out on number four?
Number four?
Point number four.
So Friday was her last day I had scheduled to kind of just do a debrief of everything of where she was at. Unfortunately, she wasn't feeling well, so she wasn't here on Friday, so I wasn't able to do that. But she has left instructions and notes and I have not had time to assess yet. She, excuse me, has made quite a bit of process or progress from some of the larger items, so I'm hoping that it was, well, I know it will help me tremendously from what I would have been doing.
Okay, you done any work on point number five?
We've received some applications, but we have not assessed yet.
All right, anybody have any questions on Patrick?
Number five gets done soon, just for your.
You say various airport-related matters.
Quite reminding. Yeah, there's a few things going on.
Can pass in that airport?
Can pass.
Passed?
Is a job actually.
Yeah.
What I'm being told is they do not have the manpower to do Winkler Airport and this. I try to explain that if they're landing here, they won't be landing anymore, so they've got to drive five miles per. They never show up anyhow. So I shouldn't say this, but these guys, they just circle and if they're not there, they come to Warren anyhow. But it's been sent to Ottawa, but the locals are not recommending. So we won't know anything until September.
Okay, so that's, was that one of the items that you worked on?
Kind of, and then there's possibly some lot swaps and new hangars and a bunch of stuff like that. It's potentially happening, but we need to check into procedures and.
Was that the budget for the runway lights, which we should?
That will be dire, yeah.
Get something on, going on that right away because they're losing lights all the time.
They're, they say it's getting dangerous out there. Talking one of them.
Like you said, they put a little ham on because they lost more lights.
Is there, is that intended?
It's working out. It's working out.
Okay. Okay, so then that is it for, for my re, my cherry. No, that's all it is.
Okay, five point one, street projects for two thousand nineteen. Have you seen this?
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Any questions on it?
What?
They're sitting right there. Hold them off easy.
I just have a question. Like, when you mentioned from on Alvee and then towards Maple Street, like on, I guess I'd be on the west, as you're going west. We've, we've actually passed something that Maple Street going south, or, yeah, south, was supposed to be done up, is that?
Contractor is going to actually start today, two and a half finishes raining forecast, so he's going to hold it off till that.
Okay, so it is?
It's on the map, yeah, it's on there, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't.
It's ready state, so.
Yeah, okay, great, great.
I have a crazy question. So all the bricks that are taken up or the parkman interlocked from in front of the Legion, do you repurpose those or do you?
Those are the Legions.
Oh, they are?
They're on their property, so I think they are for sale. Tomorrow we'll talk to them. But it's through them, so.
Okay, good, thank you.
I had a.
Well, you want bricks, don't you? I got it.
We'll talk. And educate.
Last week, you were reading some swales at the corner of my bay sidewalks and nothing but compliments. Can't say for the record. Off Nelson Street though. When the protestation comes, I, yeah. I want to show up at her door.
The improvements are really.
Yeah, and I had nothing, for the record, I had nothing to do with that, didn't even file a complaint, didn't twist anybody's arm, and it happened. Yeah, looks really good.
Well, we're coming to the worst points.
Yeah, well, it was, my wife said after it was done, I didn't think it was that bad, but she said she was getting to the point where she didn't even like to leave our bay. It was just a bummer to have to go through that.
So you did mention in here, like, there's those metal water and crates, whatever you call them, people are slipping on, so you're replacing those with concrete?
Yes, we're doing.
Are you doing Twelfth Street?
No, I think we're having two on the list for this year, but we'll do the rest of the next year.
Yeah, okay, because that's what I've had a few complaints about on Twelfth Street.
Yeah, there's two greats here, yeah, they're bad.
Yeah.
We're getting Ted Vass's other two first.
Yeah, no problem, I just asked it. Good.
Yes, this is, sorry. So this list is good, gives us a good indication of what's going to be happening. My only question would be, is Ninth Street considered completion?
Ninth Street, on a hundred block.
Yeah.
On a hundred block?
Yeah.
No, because you guys won't give us any money to rebuild it this year, so we did the best patch job we could because it was beyond a crack ceiling, it was beyond anything. So we used cold patch, we actually tried to build around the street and it worked well and saves, so that's temporary fix for Ninth Street. I don't know, she's been at the dock for a few years or so.
Now traffic is prevalent right now, so it's getting better and better now this month.
It's looking better and I had some comments, some positive comments on Ninth Street.
I don't know who you're talking to.
Yeah, you got old patches working up.
Yes, yes.
You put some of the model in Gilmore. When they put the cement through there, did you not use cold patch there? Just following that over, that's the. Oh, yeah, some of that's.
Yes, but those are only temporary. So when we hot patch, we'll dig those up, we can salvage that stuff and reuse it. So you get seven percent of something done. But yeah, those are just temporary, keep traffic going.
Any more questions for us? I was gonna say, don't let them off easy.
You're doing a good job, thank you.
So is there, is there a priority list that you're, like, three or four years out that you're, that you've got, like, this street needs done and then this one's, or, like, this?
Well, right now, I don't think there is one, but that is something we should look at.
Do you have this the next year, Kyle, if you're thinking?
Um, yeah, there's a couple of streets in a couple of years that definitely are going to need to be done, but, yeah, primarily we won't have anything on there.
I'm just curious on the decision-making process on which street gets worked this year and what sort of, you know, we'll put off for another year, I mean budgets.
Well, it comes down to budget.
Yeah.
So what it is for the budget.
It will be done this year and then.
Probably in fall, we look.
Okay, so, okay. Just, you know, is budget, we're proving like way under budget that you guys can't do anything or, you know, do we need to sweeten the pot?
We need to double the budget is what we need.
Yeah, I just need education on what's in the, what's in the pipeline for repairs and maybe, I mean, you know, a neighbor asked about Fifteenth Street because our swales or whatever, the edges, they're really falling in and big deep cracks and we call them speed bumps, reverse speed bumps, so, you know, so many kids, that's okay for us, but.
So unfortunately, those are low priority.
Yeah, yeah, low traffics, yeah.
And, yeah, there's so many like that.
Yeah.
We just finished Shannon Crescent intersection.
Yeah, well, and the intersections and the drainage has huge benefit.
We're doing as many as those that we can.
But I guess what it comes down to is we provide a budget and.
We do.
Do, yeah.
They have another idea of what needs to be done than we do.
Right, well, then that's what I was saying, are we setting a budget that barely scratches the surface and obviously?
Yes, for next year, hopefully we can address that and get things straightened out because unfortunately, we have no idea where we're at, what was supposed to be done, so.
I think what we need is a maintenance budget plus a.
Capital improvement, yeah.
No more questions? Thank you.
I'll ask questions in fall when we do our strat planning.
Okay, what do we have here? So what is the report? Everybody's read it out. Information?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nothing on that. Five point three, Park's other report, we report.
I have some requests, people on Fairway Drive, they haven't had trees yet, and they're wondering when they were going to be in line to get some trees planted up there. I think there's only two lots left there now that need to be built on, other than that, most of the homes are in. So if Sean could look in there. And I also want to compliment Sean on getting that graveyard cleaned up, it looks a lot better to pass that one.
Just have a question for Sean, too. I guess stump grinding is going to happen this, through the sunrise, I suppose, right? Or the trees are removed? Stump grinding?
I can check with him.
I'm thinking they'll likely wait till they got a whole bunch and. Well, I think from the report, it looks like Sean's on top of, of the person that's doing the grass cutting, you know, the cemetery and that, so he has applied some penalties in the past, so I think that speaks for itself.
Did we determine whose responsibility the headstones are?
I was up there, you know, I was golfing and I noticed there's dirt there, in the one corner, they always pile the dirt, and then that's where they get it from and fix up some of the graves like that.
I know, like, the, if the soil's sinking, but it's the headstones, is that family responsibility?
Well, I guess, but in the same sense, if the family's not around here, you know, if they're in B.C. or some other place, like, back to the days, Mr. Funk and Mr. Leckman, they used to take care of all that. They'd lift it up, level it off, put the headstone back in. They would come down to the rec center and get the skid loader and take it up there and fix it all on flat grass and then just put it back in the shape, so. And that's.
So. But if the headstone itself is the family's responsibility, you're in touch with the family and if, if there is family and if there isn't, and it's damaged, then the city does look at it.
You know, it varies because the headstones we bought from our parents, when you bought the headstones, it included them looking after them forever. They will go on level.
And yet we paid as a family for reliving the Henry's family's headstone, so.
But the one I was looking at, it was sitting like this, you know, it was in pretty good shape.
Well, to prevent it falling and breaking, now you're looking at bigger dollars.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
I was gonna say, there's every different combination up there.
And there's a cemetery's act abandoned, abandoned grave sites, the municipality has the requirement of the cemetery's act maintained, but if they're not abandoned, if there is family, that can't be notified, it is the responsibility of the family. However, up at, up at Hillside, you know, if you're looking at some of the older plots, they passed away in eighteen ninety-eight and who are you to contact? It becomes for.
That becomes our problem.
If, yeah, for all intents and purposes, it really should be as classified as abandoned because you're talking about three, four generations now.
And just as a side note, Councilman, if you're on the ball, of course, it seems you spend an awful lot of time with them. That's my summer activity. Anyway, moving on to five point four, water treatment report. Everybody seen that?
Lot of water, twenty million gallons.
Yeah.
I guess the lake's starting to get a lot of algae on in the game from what I understand, if you're going to see. Hopefully it doesn't cause issues with our, like, the disaster.
Maybe we're going to get rain today and you get refresh.
Yeah. Five point five, utilities report. Guys, we've been busy again. And like I say, the budget for day jobs is.
Are we now able to drain our lagoons, the fossil?
Yeah, we can do discharge.
We can do discharge now? Okay.
So that's your experiment issue?
For now, and we've already submitted our hydraulic capacity study from sustainable development and waiting for the decision.
Does it look positive?
As per my discussion with the supervisor, it seems positive, but still, like, it needs to run through different ratchets of sustainable development and we are not sure at this point that what could be the decision.
Can I backtrack a little bit? I want to commend Claire, your group up at the lake, and Andy, that was one of the best shows of July first, I've seen in a long time. It was fantastic.
Is he got a different?
With the, in our aspect, it was the worst one we've done in twenty years.
Really?
When those ones were laying on top of the water and all of a sudden you started shooting.
Those are my, those are my favorites.
Yeah.
But you obviously didn't see that we were in panic mode.
No, I didn't see that.
We had a lot of, they're called mods, electrical mods, and we had a few of them that failed.
Okay.
It was actually, oh, it was a box this big that didn't go off. And the boys on the dike scrambled, and they scrambled fast to get, to get things working again. It was going to be one of the shortest shows we ever did, but, yeah, we were definitely panicked, so I'm glad that it didn't show that because, yeah, we were.
I talked to Brian and I mentioned to you guys that it was a fantastic show for us, I was concerned with it. And, and people that were with the fire, that was really impressive too, so, yeah, congratulations.
It was a great show. I've never enjoyed fireworks last though. The whole time I was thinking, what if this goes really poorly, what if it's terrible? I was reflecting, you know? And then when it was finally over, like, phew, got that out of the way.
Well, it sounds like some community people stepped up for Beach Clean, the event, so, I mean, just hearing about that on Facebook and it looks like, you know, a good community event and community stewardship, so.
Yeah.
It's my favorite day of the year.
Twenty hour operations is complete on committee of the hole.
All right, agenda item six, committee of the hole, six point one, fire chief report. Victor tells us we have to sit up here now. Let me speak because otherwise we get picked up. All right. Does anybody have any questions? Sorry I was late, I was at my favorite spot, Thrift Store this morning. They are, were very generous, very generous to game to us this year. They're helping us out with our train site development and so now we can actually pay for cord to continue hitting stairs and doors and safety things for us. Yeah, they donated twenty grand to us as well.
Nice.
Great. Goes all the way, what they, what they donate to, and it's right from kids' breakfast club in schools to camps, to, you know, just making our community better and, yeah, it's pretty awesome. it's pretty awesome.
We can certainly publicly acknowledge that, too, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. For one of our...
Maybe our council meeting next.
We as well get the benefit from that, too, because we're probably breaking a lot of things.
Breaking it.
Yeah, they're very...
What this portion is going for is, like I said, to continue to put more stairs in place and some safety traps where temperature gets too high, we can open up some levers to allow the heat to get out, and also to install, I call it a sprinkler system, it's not a sprinkler system, but it's sprinkler pipes throughout the whole site that is hooked up to our truck, and if something goes wrong at some particular time, we call a lever, and it gives blast of water. So it's not a typical sprinkler system, but, and as it turned out, the old Tabor Home, when they were doing their remodeling, all their sprinkler system pipe needs to come out, and we were at the right place at the right time, and we got all that pipe donated to us. It cost us a barbecue for their stuff, so, not bad, not bad for charity. So we're about to set that all off, you know.
Tony mentions the old Tabor site, does anybody know what's going to be left generator there?
We had a meeting about, when was it, about two months ago, with the owners of the old Tabor Home, to try to negotiate snagging the generator for access in that zone, and we had a price in mind that we were willing to pay, and also using a tax credit process, and what they wanted for the generator was this one shifter brand new. So, just had the conversation, we're done, thank you very much for showing up to the meeting and...
So what is brand new?
About a hundred and eighty, and they were asking one fifty, and we're prepared to pay that.
And it's quite, it's quite a few years old already.
Yeah, it just hasn't, it hasn't been used a lot, like, I think in actual use, it's like three or four or five hours. Testing, while it's quite a bit more, but actual use, it would have worked wonderfully for the complex, it would run the whole thing up, then the ice plant.
So you said one eighty, that's the generator itself, or that's the control mountain?
That's the generator itself.
So they use...
What was that control mountain?
Uh, fifty, sixteen grand, and then, and then plus installation stuff, too, like, there's labor on top of that, but, yeah, so we're, you know, we were, I thought being creative of how we could give them the best bang for their buck, but apparently, they thought the, I already told you, was more interested in wanting to pay. I didn't see it move out of there as fast as they wanted it to, so I don't think that process had to happen either, so, they, they know we would like it.
Yeah, still there.
Yeah, it's still there.
Okay.
So, if you're having to buckle around with three brothers and, you know, see people folks in England, I wasn't very successful. Sorry, I forgot to turn on my own coffee here, so I'm kind of... Oh, I want to make a comment on the Els Park Place drill, admissions to Fossil last week. We, we did a fire drill at the Els Park Place senior condos. I've been working with that, that group of people for at least ten years in their fire drills, their evacuation plans, and they were, they were ready for a full, I call it a full monkey. They didn't think they were, but they were, and so what I meant by a full monkey was that we were going to conduct a fire drill, they didn't know anything about it, and it was going to be smoke involved, we were evacuating them off their balconies, we were carrying them down the stairs, we were doing everything. We were hauling hose into the, into their building, pretending to spray water on the fire, just basically turn the smoke machine off, but we did that last two weeks ago, and they did fabulous. They rescued two people off of the balcony, down a ladder truck, she only needed to use one nitro bill, so that was... But they, afterwards, they go, who's supposed to warn us? But they, they did what I'm thinking, and what I'm hoping out of this whole process is that it stirs up more interest in the other senior complexes along North Hurley, because the rest of them are not in that same position. They think they are, but they're not even close. This group, they, they take it seriously, and they were ready. The only thing that, negative that has come out of it, that I, I didn't foresee, is my guys and how big and grandmonious they are. We have damaged that building somewhat. We've got dirty gloves, and our processes in the smoke, you fall along the walls, you find a door, well, now we've got shirt mark handprints all the way along, so there's some cleaning that needs to be done in there, giving Rick Pierce an extra job to do here. But he sent me some pictures, and there are, there are some walls that have been damaged by fire hose and things like that. He's going to assess it all, so there may be, you know, small costs for us to, I, I think we need to bring it back to better than what we entered the building with, so if it requires some painting and some drive over here, whatever, then that, I think that's on you, so, I think that might be coming down the pipe here. And it's not crazy, just, you know, some scrapes on the handrails and, you know, things like that, but I think there's still thought about it.
I heard really good comments about how well it went, and, I mean, when you pump smoke into a, and as a resident, I mean, that would freak me right out, but...
See, I, I was, people are a creature of the habit, and the fire valve goes off, they open the door, they'll walk down the hall, or down the racks in, they go to the meeting place, and they'll ride on a stop. Now you throw a little winker into it, where, open the door, I can't see, they close the door, and how would you do? So as part of the process is to throw the balcony, we will come and assist you out. So we put masks on them, we, yeah, it was great, I thought it was awesome. We had the whole building taken care of within forty minutes, I would, yeah, it was great, but, yeah, there's...
It's good just to throw people... Hopefully, in one of those, somebody doesn't really panic and try and bail off the balcony.
Yeah, so we, we had, once they were outside, we sure, okay, your building isn't burning, it's just a drill, and then they go, and they immediately looked at Rick, it was awesome. They were gonna give the gears.
Andy on the north side, do you have room to get your ladders in there, get people off?
On the north side, we would use one click.
Okay.
Yeah, with their, with their bucket.
Okay.
They're going to extra twenty-five feet of reach, and right now, the, if I go off of memory, there's two on the second floor on the east side, and one on the third floor on the west side. Our west end, I should say, on that north side, that would need, next side.
Assistance.
Yeah. And that, that changes from here to here. If these people moved in when they were sixty, well, they're eighty-five now, things change, but...
And there's some in there that are very dependent on their...
The owners.
Yeah, one of the directors, I heard from Rick, and that's just relax, that's just good to someone to do.
No, I, I actually, so, you know, it's our, we use their facility to do this as a benefit for us as well, just to make sure that it's, we want to use that type of thing for that, make sure it's in good shape. Any other questions other than that? Those are the key ones I wanted to add.
Still fighting with the company regarding your truck?
Because of the long weekend, ours and also July fourth, they were closed for Thursday, Friday. I contacted them on Wednesday in anticipation for this week, and he didn't have any updated info, so he just came back and no letters to page one, but the schedule's worked, but we're, we're still anticipating it to arrive before Christmas, but to actually put into service in the first of the new year, because there's some mounting of tools and equipment that needs to be done in when they before we actually get it, so I'm anticipating that to be out for the...
And cost wise, we're still...
Still the same.
Still the same.
Yeah.
Okay. So when you mention tools and equipment, is that things that you have already, or it comes with it?
There's very little equipment that comes with it, there's a mounting practice that are, that are coming with it, but most of the tools are what we already have, just positioned in a, in a way, responding.
No questions? Thank you. For Victor, can we see about doing something to acknowledge, just put out a press release or something, thanking them for their donation or...
Please, please.
Oh, yeah, right, sorry. Yeah, very good, sorry. I need to see Victor in the corner.
If you need any info, sure, I'll just...
All right, six point two, police chief report.
You're running my report.
I can help you on the June second one.
June second one?
The boating, boating in the Mr. Pedaria, I was there fishing with my son, same boat was also trying to flip the dock, and we, forcing us off the dock, because the wake, he was coming in about five feet away from the dock and trying to flip it, so then we had to fish from the shore, and I was pretty angry, because two males, one female, from Winkler, old boat, non-balancing trailer, seven letters, serial number blue on the side, first letter was A, that's why I remember. I was a little, I was a little steamed, and I will say at that moment, I was about to make a knee-jerk reaction and pull motorized boats off that lake, in a bylaw, but...
We have a lot of complaints and issues there, that's why we set up on July first and did a water enforcement, so. There was a lot of positive comments, a few angry people, that we, we pulled off the lake and didn't allow them to come back, but that's okay, you know? We got the message across, and there was no, there was no tickets handed out, so it was an education piece, right? There was lots of warnings, and like we say, didn't allow them back on the water, so... Did you... It was that way, but it ruined their day.
Sorry, did you receive assistance from the RCP? I saw them in there.
No, we had a conservation officer with us, who was doing other enforcement that we can't, so, no, yeah, somebody mentioned about the RCP, I think there's somebody capping a thing. Cars in there all the time. Somebody asked, do the RCP work out of this area? No, it, I think...
We saw them carpool by a couple times, so that's why I was...
Yeah, no, we had one conservation officer and a couple of our guys out there.
Okay.
And for the most part, it was met with very positive remarks thanking us, because there are so many issues and the amount of people on the lake, especially that day, so we are, we are trying to get out there more often, it's just time and resources to have, right, to get out on the water.
There's a lot of people out there.
Yeah, there was, very busy day.
So how many boats were out there at that time?
At one given time? I know we, we actually kicked off twenty boats.
How many?
Twenty.
Twenty?
See, that was the thing, we've got...
Twenty boats were told to leave and not come back.
And four times, six at a time.
What was that council...
There is a, we have a rule last year, so go, six boats at a time.
Now, they may not have all been on there at once, though.
Yeah, that's true.
But, but there was a lot of boats coming and going, and there needs to be a limit.
Yeah, well, a lot of them come in at six o'clock in the morning, drop their boats off, and then take off back to wherever they're from, and then they come in later in the afternoon, and so they don't have to pay for their boat, right? And then they get out there.
Lots.
Oh, piles. When I camp up there at six o'clock in the morning, five thirty, six, it's busy, boats coming in.
Save themselves twenty-five bucks.
Yeah, lots of them.
But how do you enforce that?
Put somebody out of the gate?
Yeah, there, I mean, ideally, there should be a staff member to monitor that, and there's five on for six on right now, you have to wait.
Wait, okay.
But that obviously takes time and resources and money, if you want, but...
See, there, every boat is supposed to get a map of how they're supposed to utilize it.
Yeah.
I think with some of them, you got to learn how to read first, wow, sorry.
Does conservation check for boat license, like, not, you, not the morgue and place?
We do both, yeah, we do both. We're checking for registration of the boats, checking for alcohol in boats.
I think we, that Tetra Tech, study that was done a number of years ago, they addressed the boating on the lake, and I think this council should look at that, probably in the fall when we deal with the fossil with the strat plan, and I, I would recommend we get a subcommittee to look at addressing how, how we address boating up the lake, and what kind of restrictions. I mean, we allow anything out there. These two-cycle motors should not be allowed out there anymore, we should at least go to four-cycle.
I know.
There's some of this stuff, and maximum horsepower, maybe, I don't know what the deal is, but we need to look at it, and...
Well, there's the safety aspect, but then there's the environmental aspect, too, which there's concern with.
Well, the environmental is basically the, your environmental.
And gas bills.
Name?
Gas bills, some of those...
Well, again, that's your two-cycle engine, right?
They're way too big for the size of the lake.
Yeah, like the one guy who came under there July first, he had to step on his trailer to get up to his boat, that's how big this boat is.
Why they would come to this small lake?
Well, there's not much, but it's supposed to work, right?
Whatever, you need, that's just my thoughts, so, the council's got an appetite for it or not, I don't know, we need to look at it, so...
The council didn't really want to, I think, it's possible, it's maybe...
Well, we need to have a committee that looks at it, and then they focus on it, instead of, that's just my opinion, so...
Didn't they have an information meeting here?
Yep.
A year or two ago?
Yeah, after that Tetra Tech, Tetra Tech study was done, yeah.
And...
Well, it's like anything else, you can bring it around this table, we wouldn't agree on, wouldn't be able to agree on it either, so, you know, I think you need a smaller committee, and then you let the committee work, and they come back with the recommendations.
Is that study available somewhere?
Yeah, it is.
Awesome.
Yeah. M S C W for sure has it, and we should have several copies of it here.
Yeah, there's, there's copies in that room.
Moving on, it looks like there's a lot of vehicles getting busy today, all the week, guys.
I was gonna say that, too, it's incredible. It's an ongoing issue, and...
It's all over the place, but do you suppose it's the same people in all these different communities and offices?
Yep, I, I do. We're, we're act, and I say we're actively working on it, we have one, one member assigned to this itself, because we're trying to get ahead of them, but we're not just sitting back and waiting for the information and numbers, we're, we're working on this, and we're gaining some ground, we'll, we'll see, but it is a problem, and it is, we know it's directly related to the meth issue and the substance abuse, so, and the unfortunate part is, some of these don't even live in our community, so they're in and out quickly and, so it's, makes it a little more of a challenge, but, but we're still working on that, so... Well, these particular ones are focused on a certain area, it seems like, right? Yeah, they, yeah, yeah, there's a certain answer, we're...
We're glad I don't live on Eighth Street.
Yeah.
We're seven, yeah.
It makes it, yeah.
Well, we were in Winnipeg on July long, and parked in River Heights on the street, and told to empty your car and leave it unlocked, because prevent window breaking, so, that's what we did.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's right, if they want, they're, they're going to want to get in, right?
Yeah, so...
We had that battle with the public, when we ask people to lock up their things, and they say, why, they're just gonna break it anyway.
But then, don't leave anything there to take.
So far, we're not to that point, they're, they're looking for opportunities with vehicles open, right? That's what they're doing, or keys in the vehicles, and, yeah, so...
So we're not to the point where they're smashing and grabbing yet.
I know I heard a guy tell me that he went out and the RCP went by, stopped, backed up and wondered what they wanted. He said, if that's required, we suggest we put it in sight for the night. It'd be a lot safer. But his brother put all new wheels and tires on his Jeep, went out in the morning, is sitting on blocks. So, yeah, it just...
I mean, you can't even protect against...
Whoever's doing it doesn't care. They have full experience, so...
They don't care. Any other questions?
Who is "they"? Who is "they"?
Who is "they"?
You say "they don't care", it seems like we can identify the "they" as we solve Still waiting for one of these reports to show up without pedophilia or...
There's no other question, I've got a couple other things here. The Pride gathering went, went up to the edge, there's no major issues at all. Us people, a large gathering, which is quite no issues whatsoever. Our guys were there and present and we could be the one group that was thinking of something and we spoke with them and settled it down and some issues that we saw or heard of, so I don't think anybody else had any other reports otherwise, so...
Were you?
So that was good.
When they hit off their hill, I was heading back home.
Yeah, there's probably four, 500 people.
And your presence was just in the background. It was respectful.
No, no, and we didn't want to throw out, you know, 10 or 12 officers. We get through working that day and we had guys on standby, guys and gals from us, from Winkler, from our tact team, everybody was on standby. Just in case.
It's a respectful event.
It was.
Yeah, you don't want to be too much in your face, but you want to prepare just in case of the information that we're receiving, all the possibilities, so... So that was good. That was great. Our application process for applying another cost vote is underway. We received a vote. Deadline is June 28th. We received about 45 applications, which is lower than usual. We only get 6.80. It could be the time of the year. It could be nobody even wants to be a police officer anymore with us being in the...
Were there any in the alphabet under B or not?
Pardon me?
Any in the alphabet under B?
Under B, several.
Were there any?
Yeah, B was very...
I was trying to...
So, yeah, we're just... My two sergeants, Sean and Chris Luke, myself, just went through the applications and boiled them down. I think we have 16 that are going to proceed to the next step, which is our written examination, which is August 8th. We do have a couple of trained officers in the group, some with some related experience through sheriffs or probation or corrections, so we have a good mix, we think, and we'll see what we have at the end of it. And then finally, just to kind of follow up on what Andy was saying with the thrift store, because so much they do for the community and for us personally, the services. We normally have in the past for many years with the bikes that we get in our garage and piling and taking space and being in the way, we have thus auctioned every year, a bike auction. The last several years, we combined with Winkler just to have a bigger auction in one, but what we are doing now is we're going to go to a system where we will keep the bikes for a period of 30 days when they're turned in or found or whatever the case may be, that we come into possession of them and then we will hand them over to the thrift store. And it's for their proceeds and making sell. So they get the funds from that. So it's giving back to them, it's giving back to the community, it helps us clean our garage space out and we don't have to bring it up auction at the end of the year and hauling these bikes all over. So that's the process we're moving to.
Do they have people that'll fix them?
The expert. The expert. The expert takes them down, puts them in his shed.
Does he?
Fixes them all up and takes them back.
He's actually doing something.
And they're getting it...
For the community. They're not stopped with that.
They're getting a good dollar for those bikes. I mean, it's 50, 75 dollars, so it's... You know, I'm sure there's some parts involved with the maintenance or...
And they have a bunch of bikes and some of ours are pretty junky too, so they use the parts and picks it up and make it...
It's a win-win.
Yeah, absolutely. People will get a good bike, the thrift store, you know, yeah, fits right in.
Well, they said there's a little bike recycling facility, it looks like an auto wrecking except the bike wrecking. At least it's in the right street.
Yeah, there you go. He keeps it neat so far, so...
They're a great organization.
Yeah, they do. And, yeah, I do. We think this will work well. It helps everybody.
The tact vehicle, did you get that yet?
Did we?
Did you purchase that, the tact?
You don't want to know about that.
Don't?
No. It's written off again.
Really?
So they have another missaply. The same day that their new ones came in, actually. So we're back squared. We don't know what the damages are, but then they will fix it again in the event case. So that's kind of on standstill for now.
I was hoping it would be here in time for the parade.
I know. Yeah. Yeah, no, they got into another pursuit. And that's all I have, I believe. Any other questions?
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 5, 6.3, we have a city manager's report. Do you want to speak to it or...
Just for a little information, if any questions that we may ask. And another thing, at number 5, that's 11 and 12 of July, 12 and 13, so just remember.
Sorry. Don't say sorry. Item number 2, I want to commend you, our city manager, on his prompt attention to that. I was appreciative. Thus, the volume capacity issue, of course, was threatening to derail us and fast up that under control really quickly.
Penile connections on the Moore Drive, there's three properties. One is down by the apartments, one is in the behind modestory, one's in the answer down. Public works used to mow the roads down. Nobody's taking care of it enough, pretty old, brown weeds and...
Okay, so shit.
They used to put in one of the mowers on the back of the tractor, chop it all up.
Public works.
Yeah, well, that's when the last was here, but I don't know if that's contracted or...
I can't tell.
Okay, thanks. I know if that's the three, there could be more of their books.
Any other questions for the city manager? On 6.4, mayor's report. I have almost nothing to report for the last two weeks. I gave the convocation address, the high school graduation, replied to emails and meetings asked needed, other than that, I did nothing.
What are your report on?
Easy.
About city, I guess, so...
Those are still... That would've been, yeah, the 27th of June. Yeah, it was nice to relearn my kids' names. Boy, the five-year-old has grown up. Half a year away. All right. 6.5, external organizations. KD Cares, they, of course, sent in a, in November, before budget, they sent in a request for funding. We were pushing everything down the line until we established a budget, so they don't have a, they don't have a budget, a grant amount they're requesting?
It's usually always been a bill of capital.
I thought it was two, yeah.
Yeah, bill of capital. That's what it was in the past, I mean, I'm not sure the last couple of years, but it used to be a bill of capital.
Excuse me. It was a five-year agreement, I think, and it would have expired last year of the year before.
Yeah. I don't see a bill of capital in that, but...
And that was specifically, I think, intended for capital project when they got the cottage up and going. Is how it was written, if I recall correctly. Yeah, I had a conversation with the directors about this and it was, it was capital and now that it passed that, I was looking at operating costs. So they need to revisit that.
They're also offering to give you counsel at your...
I've never been there.
No. You're right.
I wouldn't mind a tour.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm in, so I don't need to go on.
Well, Mrs. Williams, grade five class. You were at the Mordery Foundation that night.
Yeah.
That was her last year's class. I went to her class for... Oh, something else I didn't last week. No, school's out, it was a week before that. They raise almost 50 cents per capita for our city, for the case of... Do we want to look at a funding?
Well, I think, again, in fall, we look at our budget. I mean, it was in there this year compared and we, council decided that we had a lot of priorities in our list to deal with this year, so we'll see what it looks like fall time. Once we get all the requests from the departments and then sometimes there's not much left.
You'll have to prioritize, like we have to have discretionary operations. So I guess it'll be a priority what we think should be funded, I guess.
What's that?
So I guess we'll have to decide what we should be funded.
Decide again, yeah. There's lots of needs out in the communities. 11 o'clock.
Does anybody want to forward a motion on this?
No, I think we'll deal with it in fall with the budget. Make a motion, make adjournment, and then move to the camera, is what I'd like to do.
Can't all hear it. We can't adjourn yet, but...
Okay?
We can adjourn, make a motion, we move in.
Okay, I'll move. No, that's it, make a motion to adjourn so we can move into the camera.
But we can't adjourn.
Okay? Candid adjournance, the meeting's still...
Got to come out of mid-camera back in to adjourn.
Well, yeah.
The big cap, yes. All right. Seconded.
Yeah.
Favor, opposed. Motion to go to camera for recommendations.
You want that one?
Council, whoever, seconds. Favor, is it capable? Opposed, none.
I mean, you want to adjourn? I'll adjourn. Yeah. Seconded.
Council, madam, favor, opposed, none. We're adjourned.